All right, folks, we're going to start. It's six thirty. Let's call the meeting order. How do you want to just take a quick roll call, please?
Sorry, I have. Al?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Here.
Larry?
Oh, sorry. Here.
Dean?
Here.
And then I'm marking Deb, Dale, and Lynn as absent.
And we're hoping Erin will sign out.
Yes.
Great. Okay, folks, we've got a busy night. We're going to do a, we've got a sketch plan for Lansing Station Road. Then we have a sketch plan minor subdivision, Finger Lakes Land Trust, Cedar View. Next is another sketch plan, Ridge Road. It's also Finger Lakes Land Trust. Next is a Kirby Goodman Road, operation of a kennel within a single-family home. East Shore Circle, Jesse Young. And that's a public hearing preliminary in discussion of the site plan. And last is Dandy Mart. And we're going to talk about the Seacor tonight with Dandy Mart. So let's get started. First is the sketch plan for Lansing Station Road. Anyone here for that?
Yes.
Come on up to the table, please. And could you give your name just real quickly for the folks out there?
Kenneth Gordon.
Hi. Okay. You know, I noticed on the, on the action, it says applicant proposes zone into one lot of four acres. But on the ag data statement, it says one lot of seventeen acres. So can you give us an idea of what's going on here?
Trying to subdivide the seventeen point seven acres, which would be Lot B in the new updated survey.
Okay. So you're going to be conveying Lot B? Is that the idea?
Yes.
Okay. So that's going to be roughly seventeen acres. And then on the map, we have a parcel A to the, I believe it's to the east, and a parcel C to the west, and parcel D to the south. Is that correct?
Correct.
So because we're splitting out parcel B, there'll be a new parcel by location with parcel C. A is going to be, you're going to retain, correct?
Correct. C already has a, C's already been approved for a subdivision.
Oh, it has?
Yeah, I didn't know that until three weeks ago.
All right. Is it an existing tax parcel then now?
It's only the one tax number now.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize that it had been twenty-seven years ago.
Okay.
We had a little meeting here at the, one of the offices down the hall.
Okay.
And that's as far as it went.
Okay. And then what are you going to do with parcel D?
Parcel D is being put up for sale.
So then you're going to be subdividing it into three parcels then, right? A, B, and D.
Yeah, A will maintain where our house is.
Right.
That will maintain the same tax map number we have now.
Okay.
Um, B is being sold. C and D will be listed for sale.
Okay. And then I noticed on the ag data statement, it says NA for farming operations. That just means there's no one within five hundred feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I do have the new short form.
Oh, you do, Laura?
Yeah. I talked to Heather when we got today. When I noticed they had the wrong.
Yeah, you have, you don't need this, this big form to be completed.
No, I was, didn't really pretend to.
Okay. For any questions?
This, this application is simply for the subdivision of parcel A and, or parcel A from parcel B. Parcel D doesn't appear on the application or anything.
Well, it's just for parcel B.
Yeah. So parcel D has nothing to do with it?
No.
Just a clarification?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just B is what I'm trying to subdivide.
Okay. So if you, if you want to sell parcel D, then you'd have to come back.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So parcel A and parcel D will all be one tax parcel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, okay.
Correct.
All right.
And B will have its own tax number, C.
So, folks, anything else? Tom, Dean, Sandy?
No.
All right. So I guess we've got to schedule a public hearing. And you've already done the short form, right?
Yes, sir, sure. Yeah. I'll bring it up when you ask for it.
Okay.
I'll take it and get it to you.
Okay.
I'll take that and get it scanned to you.
Okay, great. So I guess we'll just have a motion for scheduling a public hearing for the next, the next meeting. Salute Dean. Second. Tom, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, I guess we're set for today. Did you just drop that off? The other?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Finger Lakes Land Trust. We've got a couple that you can.
I'll take it and get it to you.
Okay.
I'll take that and get it scanned to you.
Okay, great. So I guess we'll just have a motion for scheduling a public hearing for the next, the next meeting. Salute Dean. Second. Tom, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, I guess we're set for today. Did you just drop that off? The other?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Finger Lakes Land Trust. We've got a couple that you can.
I'll take it and get it to you.
Okay.
I'll take that and get it scanned to you.
So I guess we're going to talk about the Cedar View Golf Course. Just a quick, what's going on, if you would, please?
Sure. It's a minor subdivision. The Finger Lakes Land Trust is purchasing half of one tax parcel, which is the subdivision we're talking about. And then the lakeside parcel just west of that subdivided parcel. This is going to be eventually transferred to New York State and become part of the Bell Station Preserve that is just across that Ridge Road.
Okay. What's, what's going to happen with the clubhouse and the outdoors?
That's going to be left up to New York State. So we're not, we don't have a fixed plan as of right now.
Folks, any questions? So, pretty clear. Parcel B is the one that Finger Lakes Land Trust is.
Um, which map are you looking at?
I think B is the parcel to the west. You're buying that as a.
Yeah, it's the parcel. A is closer to the lake.
So it's parcel.
Yes. Yeah. There's Lake Ridge Road, so the lake's.
So it's parcel.
Yeah. The parcel closer to the lake, yeah.
Closer. So it's parcel A?
Yep.
Okay.
Parcel B is being retained by Martin Elerson or.
Right. To the lake. This is the lake, so this next. Yeah, that's correct. Well, we just said A, B is reversed.
On one of the maps?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah. So the one closer to the lake, and the closer to.
Which one's it reversed?
And I noticed it's, it's not in Ag District, correct?
It is not. No, it's not.
And no, no portion is being farmed or worked right now on the site.
That's correct.
Did you guys, folks, get a chance to look at that short form? Anyone?
Yeah. I have a question. Brief description of the proposed action.
Please.
It talks about a two-hundred-and-eighty-six-acre Bell Station Wildlife Management. The property is four-hundred-and-ninety acres, is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
So what's happening to that remaining acre?
Um, there is some of the property that we're looking at for a different project that won't be used for public trails. Again, I'm not sure exactly what the plan is for that. It's the part that's closer up to Lake Ridge Road.
Yeah, I think it was not about trying to use that for solar.
Uh, yeah, there has been talk about that, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, if you combine them all, if you had five hundred acres, it could be conveyed to the state under a state forest.
Mm-hmm.
And under that, under that umbrella, it would be taxable for town and school purposes if it became a taxable state forest.
Okay.
Because you need five hundred acres of contiguous land, which would be ideal.
Right.
For the community.
Right.
If you, if we could get something like that. But you're saying portion of that acreage is going to end up going to solar farms? Well, that's, I mean, they don't know what it's going to be used for yet, right?
Yeah, we don't have anything finalized. That's right. So that portion that you're talking about that was not forested, it's an ag, vacant ag land right now.
So your question, you know, five hundred acres for, for a state forest, what's the story with the state wildlife management areas? Can that have a.
I don't know all the details. I know if, 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 there's, there's an umbrella that makes some of the state lands taxable.
Right.
And ask me five hundred acres of contiguous land. So ideally, I think the town would like to see that because the town is going to get tax dollars for school, for school and child services.
Right.
And that would be ideal.
Yeah. I, I don't know what the status of it is, if it's a what. I mean, they're talking, talking about making it a state wildlife management area.
That's, right. That's what D E C is.
I don't, I don't know what the story is.
All right. Yeah, I'm just saying that, that should be part of the conversation possibly.
Al, wouldn't it, if, if part of it did become a solar farm, that would definitely be taxable still, right?
Right, right, right. I believe so.
Depending on. I think their plan is to swap that land, right? For the solar and then try and get more lake shore from the, the power.
I'm, I'm, I don't, I haven't heard that particularly. That's not exactly in my purview.
That's what Andy just told me.
Okay. Well, if Andy, straight from the horse's mouth, I guess. You have ungood authority.
I'm sure enough plans change over time.
Yeah. I mean, ideally, it would be great to have more of that lake shore undeveloped, but.
Okay, anything else on that short form? I noticed page two or three, it says portion of the site, majority of lands regulated by stating, you can see you've got yes. You probably should have just put Cuba Lake there, right? Isn't that?
Um, I guess I was thinking across the road is the, the Bell Station property, but.
Wetlands or water bodies. So should that be no then in thirteen A?
Um, I guess the yes was Cayuga Lake.
It was what, I'm sorry?
Cayuga Lake.
Okay. So then, yeah. And then it says if yes, identifying wetland or water body, we shouldn't just say Cuba Lake there.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. Okay.
All right. And then, and then I got a kick out of the Lake Surgeon on fifteen. Anybody else on this short form?
Well, that Lake Surgeon question comes up too, but it's one of the other.
It's automatically filled, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Erin, is Erin here?
She's.
Oh, she is? Erin, you there?
I am here. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just, I'm a little bit confused in the second paragraph because it talks about something other than what we're looking at here. So it just consists of approximately a hundred and twenty-five acres. So we're looking at parcels A and B here, no matter how you dice them up, I guess. But we're looking at this, if you go down to near the bottom here, it says that we have two parcels, one's fifty-nine point four acres, parcel A, remainder is parcel B, fifty point nine acres. So that doesn't add up to a hundred and twenty-five. So I'm sure you can tell me where the hundred and twenty-five comes from.
Yeah, I think that those two numbers, it was a mistake and there was an updated short form that was sent with the correct acreage. The numbers were taken from the lower parcel that's not part of the subdivision accidentally. So the, the whole.
So it's not a hundred and twenty-five and seventy-five and fifty point nine?
Right.
It's really fifty-nine point four and fifty point nine?
That's right.
Okay. Fifty-nine point four and fifty point nine.
So we got to make those changes. A hundred and ten point three, that's more, I want to get those changes again. Okay, folks, anything else about this one? No, this is all, those items are corrected. Okay. And then, so I guess we've got to schedule a public hearing on this as well. So salute Dean. First, second? Yes. Larry, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. So move on to the, the next land trust. And you're just purchasing some additional acres, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. So the twenty, approximately twenty acres on the southwest side of Ridge Road, which is adjacent to the Land Trust property, the Sims Jennings Cuba Cliffs Preserve. So this will be.
So that's the parcel A?
Parcel A is what we plan to purchase, yes. Parcel B will be retained by the current owners.
Any other questions, folks?
So parcel A is, is it approximately eighteen acres, is that correct?
I believe twenty point six, more or less.
Twenty point six. And of that, eighteen is currently in production?
Correct.
Under control of production?
Correct.
And your purposes, you're looking at using it for parking?
Uh, no, it would be open sort of grassland habitat buffer to the, to the preserve.
Do you know what the current ag use is?
Hay.
It's just hay.
Anything else is adjacent to your other property?
Correct. Correct.
I guess we'll, next is a public hearing for this as well. So salute Dean. First, second? Second. Larry, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. I guess we're set for the night. See you next, next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you said you, you, you already sent in and revised one of these short forms, correct? Okay, correct. Okay. All right. Next, we'll be, we have Barstow Inn. Anyone here for that? Hi, could you give your name?
I'm sure, Kevin Kirby.
And can you give us a little brief idea of what's going on?
Sure. Um, I'm looking to build a primary residency for myself. Looking for a long time and I've been able to find anything that was suitable, I decided to build. So I'm going to build a one-story ranch with no, my steps, sort of steel farmhouse and then build the inside out so it can accommodate me. I'm on disability, I got a disability ten years ago, so since I'm here today, I've started a simple little dog breeding business. Then I have a few dogs, I have some dogs over my house, we keep going on vacation and that. And then I learned that in Lansing, four or more dogs is considered a kennel, which is, it's not in Brooklyn, where it currently is. So that's why I needed to come before you to get approval for that. So it's really a primary residence with just some, with a, it's not, it's not a kennel, it's just like four dogs.
So I noticed on the sketch, there was, it said, I think, a covered patio. Is that where you're going to have a dog on?
No.
No?
Well, there's, there's a back patio, that's just the residence back patio. And then there's the backyard and a climbing fencing in the backyard.
Oh, so yard defense in the yard for the dog?
Yes.
Okay. And looking at the aerial photo, you, you don't have very many neighbors that are close by, correct? You're back off the road.
Yeah, but the property situation, so the house will be about, we're, we moved back a little farther.
Three hundred feet.
About three hundred to three hundred and thirty feet off the road.
Okay.
And then the fenced area will then be behind that. And then behind us, there's about a hundred and twenty acres of hay field.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no one behind us either.
But there are neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are neighbors. Yeah, I'm one of them.
Okay. We'll get you in a second here.
Okay.
So your notes say that you, the dogs will be inside during the evening hours, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and one other thing I noticed, if, if it's three hundred feet drive, if the driveway's three hundred feet, there is different standards for the driveway. Did they let you know that?
No.
So if it's like two foot, right, is that correct? Over three hundred?
I can talk to that.
One fifty to five hundred?
Um, so if the driveway is over one hundred and fifty feet, it's required to be twenty feet wide and it's required to have a twenty-foot ham, a hundred and twenty-foot hammerhead sixty-foot wide or a ninety-six-foot diameter called sack for a turnaround for the fire apparatus.
For emergency purposes, yes. That was some, I believe we discussed that with John a while back. I really don't know all the details.
Oh, thank you so much.
It's right here.
Okay.
So they have to do it? The drive shows a twenty-foot wide access. But there's no hammerhead, so it's twenty-one feet wide. Why is that? There's no, there's no more development on the site. All, all that's there right now is the driveway. If that hammerhead was built, it could go anywhere through here.
I'm sorry, we don't even have a, a yard yet, or we're still in the.
I was planning to do it today. I don't, no worries. I was trying to. Look pretty nice.
Also, part of this, I didn't see an ag data statement, right? We need one of those? I didn't. You gonna see one in your package?
Sure. Plans.
So that's something you're going to have to fill out completely as well as part of the process. And, and then the question is, do we want to have a board members? Do we want to have a public hearing on this? Do we want to schedule that? Yes. 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 Okay. I guess there was a comment, I mean, since you're here, I'll go ahead and, do you want to comment on this?
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
Um, my name is Lisa Schultz. I live directly across the street at ninety, there at eighty-nine. Um, I have a couple of questions about are we going to, before public hearing, have information on the environmental impact statement regarding the roads, the water, the sewer, and the waste from all the animals, which are involved all that. Um, you know, I'm just interested, I mean, the neighbor directly to the glance here, the neighbor directly there. She works nights. She sleeps all day.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, I'm the only one here tonight, but I know from the people that I've spoken with, which two up the street, directly on both sides of eighty-nine, ninety, the next one, myself, and down the road, we're all worried about what's going to happen with the water and the noise and the fecal matter, what's going to be.
Okay. So the board members have, have recommended that we have a public hearing.
Okay.
So I'm going, I'm going to ask for a motion. Sandy?
I have one more question.
Sure.
You describe this as not your typical dog kennel. So can you describe what, how it's different?
Well, for one, it's, we don't have any kennels at all. It's a, it's a cage-free boarding, so it's, you know, lots of like five dogs that are in our home.
Right. No one is caged.
So it's outside your house?
Right. They're just sitting up.
Inside.
So it's like a flexible five dogs that hang out with us, you know, living room.
No dog is outside after ten P M. Ten P M is bring them in.
And we have, it's just small dogs, under fifty pounds. Um, so it's, you know, it's, we live in our yard, we scoop up the poop and we put in the trash. It's really, you know, they're, it's not, we're quite enough.
I know people that have six dogs of their own. Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can understand neighbors being concerned about.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, we work with property alike and there's, you can hear dogs walking all over the place during the day and, you know.
When you read our website and you, and you hear it's a cage-free boarding, what comes to your mind? You think free range? But realistically, they are enclosed in, in a park and indoors.
And it's.
Exactly.
How big is that? It's going to be small pen and, I mean, size of this room, maybe?
Oh, it's not like our backyard, so probably bigger than this room.
Maybe bigger than this room?
Yeah. It's our entire backyard that we do. And we hang out, we live, we play with each other all day. And then usually, often, often come for a period of a week, usually when people travel. We don't do it every day, so we'll be, people just for a day, we'll be dogs, but come for a week or two. Um, we try to maximize, maximize at fifty pounds, so we don't have any aggressive breeds or any large, large breeds.
Have you had a chance to talk to the neighbors yet?
Have not. I was going to do that, this all came up, they were going to do it, but then the weather changed, so it's been a little spring, because we're not even expected to begin building until May, so.
So let's, let's finish that public hearing. So Sandy said, yes. I'm, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Tom, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. So we're going to have a public hearing. Notices will go out to all the neighbors, correct? Heather, how far?
Six hundred feet.
Okay. And then during that hearing next month, if you could go into detail for the neighbors on exactly what, I know you put it in writing here, maybe, how are we going to get this to the neighbors? They would have, it's on the, it's on, online? There's comments and details here, right? So you can go online to read?
Yeah.
That's the bills are online.
There's a summary here, so you or your neighbors can go on and read this. And then you can give a brief presentation to the neighbors at the next meeting.
Sure.
All right?
Also, I want you to fill out the ag statement.
Yep.
The ex, okay, yeah.
I'll make sure it's not in our files, and if not, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I guess that, folks, anything else?
Yeah, I'm assuming that when you come back, your site plan will be amended for a hammerhead or something.
Okay, I guess we're set for today.
Okay, thanks.
So, okay. Who's up next? Guys, can you give your names for the folks out there, please?
My name's Jesse Young, and I'm representing the owners.
I'm Scott Gibson, I'm the stormwater engineer in the project.
Andy Sharaba, Sharaba Engineering.
All right, guys, any changes from last time you were here?
Well, we did, we formalized the plan. We were here last in November with sketch plan. So we had some very nice hand sketches for you. We've now put CAD to the drawing, so the drawing set that you have in front of you includes the subdivision of the entire parcel. As you recall from November, we're looking to subdivide the northern portion of the lands into five buildable lots. Two lots will be reserved for stormwater management practices dedicated to the town. And then the largest lot, Lot 6, about 5.6 acres, will be retained for the existing house that's currently on the north side of East Shore Circle. Lot 7, which is the balance of the 23 acres on the south side of East Shore Circle between East Shore Drive, that's going to remain a vacant parcel, and that will be considered for the future subdivision in a separate phase.
So a couple of things I'd like to discuss today. One is the trail, and two is the right-of-way and possible future road. I spoke with John, board members, and John wanted us to discuss whether the board felt that this future, that the right-of-way and future road was a good idea. And asked, we've had problems, you know, down the road where that future road and who builds it and who's responsible for it. Should this be a public road as part of this application? Yes, so, Larry?
Looking at it from the standpoint of that is a future phase of the project.